Let's call the Board of Commissioners' meeting to order here at 10:02. All those who are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we have some very interesting members of the public here today, but do we have any public comment for items that aren't appearing on today's agenda? Seeing none, any additions to the agenda from the Commissioners?
None.
All right, moving on to the meeting minutes, we've got two of them, and if they're both fine, we'll take a motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes from the meetings held October 15th and 16th.
I have a second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the meetings held on October 15th and 16th. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. And how you doing, Gary? You doing good now? All right. So we'll move on to proclamations. We have proclamation number 57, recognizing October 21st, which was yesterday, as James "Adam" Beaver's 187th birthday in Center County. And we're joined by local historian, Vani Henninger, and I believe you've also potentially brought the general with you.
And what?
All right, well, why don't you both come on up to the podium?
Or it could be Dave Lees.
They sit with him?
What's that?
Yeah.
Well, can you sit at the table? That'd probably be some better film.
Okay.
Need any help with the chair, Vani?
No, I'm fine. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Well, I will hand it over to Vani, since she was the only one who got this rolling. But General Beaver was a major contributor to Center County, to the university, and to a broad variety of initiatives that we all benefit from here in Center County. So I'll hand it over to Vani.
Yes, being a historian, I do a lot of reading and so on, and my number-one person for who's who in American history would be James "A." Beaver. He was the general during the Civil War and was very well-liked. He was the governor of Pennsylvania. He was the president of Penn State University and was on the Board of Trustees for 17 years. He lived in Balfond, did wonderful things through the community. When the Johnstown Flood happened, he was called upon to excel in what needed to be done there, and he was recognized for the great effort in what happened, how he handled it. Also, in 1877, when they had a railroad strike, he was called to Altoona to check why they were having riots. He figured that out, took care of it. So he was a man that was around and did everything and anything. And what's really interesting is he lost one of his legs in the Civil War and did all this on one leg.
Yes.
So he was an amazing man, and there's just a lot of nice things. As a matter of fact, I have decided I gotta get his biography and read it, or autobiography, whichever is available, and read it, because he's just such an interesting person.
Very much so. In fact, I believe the fourth time he was wounded was when he did have to have his leg amputated. I think he was in an ambulance that he had ordered to the front so he could command his troops from the ambulance.
Well, and also, he had missed being in the Gettysburg War because he had an injury from a previous war and was not there.
Yeah.
So that was a shame, because he was such a good leader.
Yes, yes. And do we, are we gonna pass it over to the general now?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Well, thank you for invitation. Really appreciate being here. Yeah, that first wound he had there was in the Battle of Chancellorsville in May of 1863, prior to Gettysburg, and he was wounded severely at Chancellorsville in Virginia, and they sent him back to Balfond, basically to die. But he didn't. He fooled everybody. He re-energized and basically recovered from his wounds here in Balfond and rejoined the regiment July 14th, 1863, right after Gettysburg. And of course, he was wounded several times, but he was such an excellent commander. He was really a stickler for detail. And when General Grant came east in 1864 to command, when President Lincoln brought him east, said enough's enough, we gotta start doing something. We need a real commander, overall commander. When they did the Grand Review in the spring of 1864, there was thousands and thousands of troops, and they said, you know, Grant was like acknowledging them all, watching them all, but only two, two regiments excited his suspicions, like, wow, these guys, was the 40th New York under Colonel Egan and the 148th Pennsylvania under Colonel Beaver at the time. So he was, I mean, he really got Grant's attention even. He was like, wow, these guys really are something. So, but then, not only did they march well, they fought well, too. By the end of the war, there was four Medal of Honor recipients in the 148th. That's very high for one regiment.
Oh, yeah.
And then, as far as losing his leg, that was in August of 1864 at the Battle of Reams Station, right outside of Petersburg. The sort of, the Union line sort of collapsed a little bit, and he was trying to rally the troops, end up with a severe wound, and he ended up being taken off the field, basically by the bugler of the 51st Pennsylvania. There's a book called No Braver Man, and he scooped him up, saw Beaver about to get trampled by Wade Hampton's cavalry coming, and they were able to get him off the field before that happened. So, you know, it was pretty interesting. Then the First District Columbia Cavalry kind of saved the day. That was actually a regiment. They actually got in between them, and they had the newly issued Henry Repeating rifles.
Yes.
So Wade Hampton's cavalry kept three charges, and they thought, this isn't working so well, because these guys had repeaters, and there weren't very many repeaters at that point in the war. There was a few here and there, like the Spencer and whatnot. So, but anyway, it's just sort of a little overview there, so.
And the 148th is recognized in our Soldiers and Sailors module in front of the courthouse.
Great, excellent.
Practically an entire section?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's a large, seven out of 10 companies came from Center County.
Yeah.
So Center County was well-represented in the war by all those that you see in front of the courthouse. However, the 148th was called the Center County Regiment. Beaver actually started with the 45th Pennsylvania as a lieutenant colonel. And then in August of 18, late August of 1862, when Lincoln killed for 300,000 more troops, he was promoted then to colonel of the newly-formed 148th Pennsylvania, and then they went from there. So they went to Camp Curtain down in Harrisburg, and then on to Maryland, and eventually, Chancellorsville was their baptism by fire.
Yeah.
And, yeah, so.
And his homestead is the stone building across from the high school.
Oh, okay.
That's where he lived, and that's the Beaver.
So that's preserved now?
Well, it's being used for offices right now.
Isn't that the one with the office buildings?
Yeah.
I think the, Sarah Casey used to have an office in there.
Yep.
Yeah. So, yeah, James "A." Beaver was quite a character, too, though. And one other thing, just, it's kind of, it's really relevant here to Center County history, the Grange Fair, which was called the Picnic back in the day. He's the one that procured the original tents that, he got them from the newly-formed National Guard, the National Guard. They were like, people, people were, at first, when the picnic happened, they would try to go home dark, and they were having to go over seven mountains and places, and it wasn't a real safe thing to do. So they said, is there any way people can camp out here? Well, James Beaver said, yeah, we can make this happen, and he basically procured the tents, and then it's history from there, so, for the picnic, which now is called the Grange Fair, so.
And we still use the same sort of canvas tent?
Pretty much, yeah. We call it a wall tent, yeah. It's pretty much the same, yeah.
Yeah.
And you know, if you, we have a pretty significant artifact from James Beaver and Center County government, too. We have his flag that sits in the courthouse annex, in the courtroom. If you look in the wall there, Bill Thomas, I think it might still belong to Bill, but it's James Beaver's flag. It's pretty well-preserved, and it's in a, it's under glass.
So, so I really appreciate honoring him this day, and it's like Vani said, it's one of the most amazing characters in the country ever, but a lot of people don't realize that. We do as native Center Canyons, but still, all those who are not, welcome to Center County, so, yes.
And they named something else for him, I can't remember.
Something big.
Yeah. It's a local one.
How about Beaver Stadium?
Oh, that's right.
There we go.
Thank you for helping me with that.
And a lot of people don't realize, if it wasn't for Beaver, there wouldn't be any lines today. He's the one that pretty much saved things from going down the tubes back then. Things were floundering, and he basically, they said, the old, old main. He came clump, clump, clump down the hallway and went into the boardroom and slammed his cane on the desk and just cleared everybody out, and he started picking people personally to run the thing. And Atherton, George Atherton, was one of the ones he picked to right the ship, so to speak. Yeah, so Atherton, he knew Atherton from the Civil War, who was from Connecticut originally, and who's buried right next to Schwab Auditorium.
Right.
And, yeah, so he, Beaver personally saved Penn State from going down the tubes. He really did. And then started the sports program and everything, so, yeah. Procured the field, the old Beaver Field, which was up by the present-day Nittany Line Inn.
Oh, all right.
I think that's where the Carpenter Building is now.
And the old water tower there was the old locker room for the original football team, yeah.
Wow. Lot of history in Center County.
Lot of history here in Center County.
Mentioning a lot of history, Vani, I think you said there's something else happening coming up, the 75th anniversary.
Yes, it would be the Aransburg Story, which happened October the 23rd, 1949, when 40,000 people plus gathered in Aransburg, and probably one of the first civil rights movements in the United States.
Yep.
And the anniversary, so they're gonna have a church service Sunday after, or Saturday afternoon at 2 o'clock at the Salem Lutheran Church in Aransburg in celebration of the 75th anniversary.
Wonderful.
Yes.
I know that was written up in Time Magazine, and there were, I think, a couple of other ones they did afterwards as well.
Yes, yes.
That was wonderful.
Quite a bit of information on the web, internet concerning that.
Still have no idea where they put 40,000 people in Aransburg, but.
Well, you know, there's a couple things really interesting about it, because one thing was, being October, back in '49, Saturday, it rained and snowed and blowed and was terrible weather. And it even blew the tents down and stuff that they had put up for the celebration.
Oh, my goodness.
Sunday morning, the sun shone, it was a beautiful day, the temperature got up to almost 70, and it was just a lovely day. Monday morning, it was just like Saturday. Tell me, somebody else wasn't there.
Or it could be typical Central Pennsylvania weather.
So this was a civil rights demonstration or organization that occurred in Aransburg?
It was a pageant, and really, it involved everybody in Center County, all the fraternity organizations, churches. Penn State did all the props for the pageant. The governor was involved. They had people here from, to speakers from all over, including the UN and everybody. Ralph Brunsch was there.
Wasn't it something of a tie-in to Aaron Levy's donation of the communion set to the local church?
Yes, yes. And I felt very honored when I helped with the 50th celebration, and we actually used the communion set for communion at the service that we had.
Wow.
That's amazing.
Very special.
Wonderful. Gary, any questions, or Jacob?
I'm already on it. I'm writing a story on that right now.
Oh, good.
Oh, really? Fabulous.
That's great.
Well, do want to check with Vani out in the hallway, she can give you additional background details, I'm sure. Gary?
Beaver's tenure at Penn State, I know he was trustee president, and then he became president of the university, and you're saying at that time what he raised the visibility of athletics and the university itself, is that?
Yeah, back in the 1880s. So he basically saved it from going down the tubes, and he decided, yeah, we need a sports program, too. So, you know, the sports program goes way back. I'm not sure exactly, is it fuchsia and black? Was that the original colors?
Yeah.
Yeah, before it was blue and white. So, interesting.
And he designated the land there by the Nittany Line Inn for?
Yes, for Beaver Field, which became for football and track and field. There's a great picture in Coke Funeral Home, actually, they have a lot of historical pictures in there, and there's a picture from the, like, 1901 of a track meet. Now, I ran track and cross-country back in my, back for Penn State back in the 70s, and I can't believe the way people dressed for a track meet back then. Everybody looked really formal, coats and ties and long skirts, and everybody was all dressed up, and the grandstand there at the Beaver Field for a track meet, it's like, wow. I'm just used to, you know, T-shirts and shorts and whatnot, but, yeah, it was really grand back then, you know.
That would've been back when Old Coley was the mascot for Penn State.
That's right, yes.
Yes. It's always a trivia question to various history shows. I try to remember that one.
One of your biggest rivalries was the Balfond Academy.
That's right, that's right, back then, yes.
A lot of famous graduates from that academy.
Absolutely.
Including governors.
Yeah, wow.
Additional questions, Gary? You good?
All right.
Great. Well, thank you very much, everyone. I think we could probably go to comments now. I think I've kind of worked mine in as we've been talking. Commissioner Concepcion.
Yeah, just thanks for bringing this history to our attention. I knew a little bit about Governor Beaver, but I didn't know this much about him, and what in a history of accomplishment and heroism, truly.
Yes, very definitely.
And sacrifice for his country, really, all around him.
Thank you.
Needed to be recognized.
Yes.
Because too many people have forgotten who he was.
Right.
Yep.
Is there a plaque at Beaver Stadium about him, his life?
There's two different ones. There's one across from Lebrano Park there, there's a bust of him on that stone there.
Oh, okay.
And then, if you look where the sports museum on the south side, several years ago, when I was reenacting the 148th Pennsylvania, we actually did a dedication service there. There's a plaque there also honoring Colonel and then General Beaver, basically, yes. So it's, it's good.
This is pretty cool, and, you know, I think, I think it's important that we do remember our heritage locally. We don't think that we have that much to celebrate from 150 years ago or more, but we really do, and there were a lot of heroes in the Civil War that we need to remember who not only, not only served, but also gave the ultimate sacrifice.
For sure.
And this is something, I feel like Penn State students need to learn this history to know, you know, the kind of people who founded this university and.
Yeah, I agree 100%. It's when people have no idea why it's called Beaver Stadium, and a lot of people do not, even a lot of alumni. And I'm like, ah, but you're right, there should be some education.
They just know they come and have a lot of fun.
Right.
And that's made possible by the sacrifice of people who came before.
For sure, absolutely.
For 80 or so years, Penn State was not that large of a university. Started out as the Farmers High School. I think that was advertising, it was really a college, but, you know, when you go from a high school to a college to a university, and as I'm sure Steve and Vani are aware, it was Balfond that financed most of the initial construction of the student buildings at Penn State. It wasn't, it wasn't the state government.
Absolutely.
Yes, you're exactly right.
And a lot of the early correspondence, these soldiers that left from Center County here that went on, when they would write home to people that were living in the area, it was to State College, it was Farm School, Center County, addressed to farms, because State College was not incorporated as a borough until 1896.
Yep.
And it came to Bollesburg, the male came to Bollesburg at that time.
Yes, where Company G came out of Bollesburg, yes.
There were a fair number of troops mustered in State College during the Civil War as well.
Yes, again, Farm School, Center County, yes.
Yeah. Tremendous. Unless there's anything else, I think we could take a motion to adopt the proclamation, and then we'll take a photo.
I'll move to adopt proclamation 57 of 2024, recognizing October 21st, 2024, as James "Adam" Beaver's 187th birthday in Center County.
And I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to adopt proclamation number 57, recognizing October 21st as James "Adam" Beaver's 187th birthday in Center County. All those in favor do so by saying aye. 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 Pose nay. Motion carries. All right.
So if we do the 190th, we have cake.
Yeah, let's do the 190th. Have some cake, that guy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Look, someday, look at the history of Old Crow Bourbon.
Really? Okay.
And the label that they use today was based on an idea that some Union soldiers that were stationed at State College had.
No, are you serious?
Of course.
That's amazing. It's good to see that. Thanks, Steve.
All right. No problem.
Yep, yep. Stand right next to him.
All right. Three, two, one. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks.
That was one good, that was one thing that, one good thing that came from yourself.
I lived there for 12 years in Texas when I came back, so, there you go. Yeah, I've heard me and Coley Yankee a few times. Take care. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Vani.
Thank you.
All right, moving away from generals in history and moving on to contracts and authorizations, we've got Jonathan here with three capital project items.
Good morning. First, I'm asking for your consideration and approval of additional services with MG Architects to provide design services for east-side parking at the Human Services Facility. As you know, parking is a premium at that facility, so this would add approximately 26 spaces to that building.
That would be great. All right, keep going.
There was a motion on right after.
Oh, there is a motion on for that one, as I flip the page. All right, any questions, Commissioner Concepcion? Mr. Dershowitz? All right?
I'll move to approve the proposal with MG Architects Limited.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the proposal with MG Architects Limited. All those in favor do so by saying aye. Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries, and now for our second item.
The next item is for your consideration and approval of a revised proposal for additional design services for lease space three, which would be in the CYS space at the Human Services Facility. This would be from a Pennsylvania state grant and total $14,250.
Great, thanks, Jonathan. I know we've got some human services nonprofits that are now looking at co-locating with us in the Human Services Building. It only makes sense. Commissioner Concepcion?
Yeah, no question. I just think this is a good opportunity for some synergy.
Mr. Dershowitz? All good. All right.
I'll move to approve the revised proposal with MG Architects.
We have a motion and a second to approve the revised proposal with MG Architects. All those in favor do so by saying aye. Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries, and now our third item.
Next, I'm asking for your consideration of a contract with TMG Builders to provide security upgrades for the front entrance of the courthouse. This contract totals $9,800.
All right, thanks, Jonathan. Any questions from either Commissioner on that one?
No, that is a good project.
All right.
I'll move to add the contract with TMG Builders to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to add the contract with TMG Builders, Inc., to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye. Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Great, thanks, Jonathan. All right, and now we have Krista from Risk Management about a lease renewal.
Yes, good morning, everyone. So I would like to ask you to consider renewing our lease at our Magisterial District Office on South Frazier Street, 131 South Frazier Street. That is where Judge Han resides, has his offices. The contract is going to be with State College Borough, and we achieved a rate of $4,805 per month for a three-year term, from November 1st, 2024, to October 31st, 2027, with the option to renew for two additional one-year terms.
Great, thanks, Krista, and we do appreciate working with State College Borough on coming to an agreement for the additional three-year lease at that location. Commissioner Concepcion?
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Dershowitz? All right.
I'll move to add the contract with State College Borough to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to add the contract with State College Borough to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye. Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Great, thanks, Krista.
Thank you.
And now Kathy has 10 contracts for the Super Department of Mental Health, Intellectual Disability, Early Intervention, Drug and Alcohol.
Good morning.
Morning.
See if I can't run through these pretty quick for you.
It's all right.
Most of these are renewals of existing contracts, and we do have a few that are new contracts for our department. The first is a renewal with Crossroads Counseling for the mental health services that they provide on behalf of our department. This includes psychiatric evaluations, medication visits, individual and group therapy, telepsych, and outpatient services to the Center County Correctional Facility. Contract total is $31,000, mostly state funds, county match is $1,429. All of these contracts that I'll be going through are for the time period July 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2025. The second is a new contract with Focus Behavioral Health. This is for our Intellectual Disabilities Department to provide companion in-home community support, respite, and transportation services. This contract total is $20,000. Most of that is state funding, and the county match portion is $922. The third contract is also new, actually, the next two are both new contracts. The first is with Terrapin House, and the second is with Values in Action. The service is called Housing Transition in Tennessee Sustaining Services. Both of these programs support individuals who are looking to move out on their own, be independent in the community, and so this service helps them to build those skills, figure out working with landlords, building that skill set. So we're contracting with both of these agencies for that service. With our housing pilot project with the Office of Developmental Programs, it was important to bring on providers who could do that with individuals. The contract with Terrapin House is for $12,100. Again, mostly state funding, and the county match is $558. The contract, or the letter of agreement with Values in Action is for the same amount, $12,100, and the county match portion is $558. Item number five is with Skills Incorporated for mental health services, including psychiatric rehabilitation, community employment, and peer support services. On the intellectual disability side, they provide supported employment, CPS, community, and facility-proved vocational services. The contract total is $214,606. Again, that's mostly state funds, and the county match portion is $9,893. Item number six is a contract renewal with Center County Youth Service Bureau for the mental health services that they provide on behalf of our department. This includes the Declutter Program, children adolescent respite, family group decision-making, student assistance program services, and our CASP program. Contract total is $142,733. Again, mostly state funds, and the county match portion is $6,580. Contract renewal with Peer Star LLC to provide mental health services, including individual and group peer support for adult and children adolescents. Contract total is $68,000, I'm sorry, yes, $68,000, state funds for the most part, and county match of $3,135. Contract renewal with Community Services Group to provide mental health services, including psychiatric rehabilitation, and outpatient services, including individual psychotherapy and group psychotherapy. This contract is for $41,000, mostly state funds, and a county match of $1,890. We go back to a We go back to a contract renewal with Crossroads Counseling for the drug and alcohol side of their service delivery, which includes case management, outpatient, intensive outpatient, recovery support, intervention services, medication-assisted treatment, and the recovery house program that they provide. The contract total for drug and alcohol is one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. That includes state funding and a county match of six thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars. And then again, back to Center County Youth Service Bureau for their drug and alcohol services, which is specific to performance-based prevention services. This contract total is six thousand, six hundred and twelve thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars, mostly state funding, and county match of twenty-eight thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars.
Great. Thanks for covering those ten contracts, Kathy. Off the top of my head, I think it comes to well over a million dollars. Appreciate that, and we appreciate working with all of these human service agencies. Center County has, as Steve will tell you, a long tradition of working with local agencies and nonprofits to provide the services throughout the county, and we appreciate those partnerships.
Sure.
Commissioner Concepcion, questions or comments?
No, just thank you for running through all of this. It really shows a good cross-section of the kind of services that the county provides to citizens who are in need. Thanks.
All right.
Then I'll move to add the M H I D E I DNA items one through ten to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to add the ten items for mental health, intellectual disability, early intervention, drug, and alcohol to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Got a kind of a longish consent agenda, but primarily contracts that we did go over last week. Unless there's anything else, we'll take a motion.
I'll move to approve this week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve this week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. And now we welcome Todd Dolbin from the CBICC. Would you rather have him at the podium or at the desk, Gary?
Maybe the desk.
Desk could be good. So come on up to the desk so Gary can get a little bit better video. And CNET as well, of course. So Todd is here looking for a letter of support for CEDOCAG, which is our Regional Economic Development Group. They are putting in a Build to Scale Grant application for a project involving, oh, nice acronym, SUCCEED.
Yes, that took us a while.
Okay. Well, it was good. Good work. Sensors, ultrasound, and chromatography for collaborative economic expansion and development. Love that acronym.
Excellent.
And it's, I believe, for a federal economic development grant.
Correct.
So if you could give us more details, Todd, because I think this is a little bit of a spinoff of your recent economic development plan.
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity. So yeah, we're here to request letter of support for our application for the EDAs Build to Scale Grant. So this program, this Build to Scale program is actually developed to support organizations that strengthen the entrepreneurs that build and scale technology-driven businesses, job creation, and new technology products and services. So this grant is, as you said, is a partnership between CEDOCAG, Ben Franklin Technology Partners, and the Chamber. CEDOCAG is the applicant, and we will be the subrecipients of this. And it is a matching grant, and so the scope of work and the initiatives that will be following, we have about six different initiatives from this grant that we'd be, be looking to accomplish. First one would be access to capital investment for startup and early-stage businesses. Second would be developing a strong regional branding and marketing strategy to drive national awareness of our region as being a hub for sensor research, development, and commercialization, securing presence at national and international trade shows in partnership with D C E D's Office of International Business Development, conduct regional supply chain analysis to see what existing businesses we already have that support this sector, connections with our local educational institutions to create career pathways and hiring pipelines for our local sensor businesses, and lastly, training for the businesses themselves for intellectual property rights, international trade regulations, scaling, and product preparation needs. So this will be the first steps in positioning Center County to be recognized as a leader in, you know, across the United States in sensor technology and innovation, and really help diversify our local community economic base. And so as you know, this aligns with our, our countywide economic development strategic plan, and also with this Pennsylvania statewide development goals and the key industries that are already heavily reliant on sensors for, for their operations. So would really appreciate, thank you for your consideration and supporting this request, and with your endorsement, we hope to make this project succeed reality.
That's wonderful, Todd. We're, I think, overall, we're going to be very supportive. And as one of the spinoffs from your hundred and fifty-plus-page strategic plan, the consultants found out that, I mean, we're already kind of new, but they found out that we are potentially the densest concentration of sensors, ultrasound, and chromatography businesses in the United States.
Correct.
And if you did look at the list of, say, the top fifty private sector employers in Center County, you would find numerous businesses in the sensor, ultrasound, and chromatography fields. In fact, some of our largest entrepreneurial successes here in Center County are organizations like this, such as, some names people would know of would be like Restech and KCF Technologies are two of the larger ones.
Millipore Sigma.
Yeah, both employing hundreds of people in Center County, and of course, your dad used to work for Millipore Sigma. So great companies here in the county, and I think we're all very excited about the opportunity to go after a, I'm assuming, multimillion-dollar
Yes.
federal grant.
Yes.
Wonderful. Pass it over to Commissioner Concepcion.
Yeah, thanks. I guess I'd really like to congratulate you for how you've been able to hone in on like what was already an area of strength here, and that the efforts that you're making to amplify and magnify the resources that we may have to be able to invest in, in what's already a strength, because we have the knowledge base, and we have, you know, a significantly high number of really qualified students graduating from engineering programs at Penn State every year that could be employed right here in State College and Center County if, you know, if these companies were to be able to increase the size of their, their footprint, as well as, you know, investing in new companies that might be starting up in these areas. It's just, you know, I think it's kind of a, a really innovative approach to economic development from the Chamber that we haven't, haven't seen in this, this kind of concentrated, focused manner before that's, I think, you know, really could be incredibly productive.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Dershowitz?
Yeah, it's good that you're playing to our strengths, and it looks, it looks like there's, there's a synergy, obviously, to, to bring more focus on these groups, and there's a lot of great businesses in our community, and it looks like there's obviously room for more.
There is room for more, yes.
Hopefully, we can make, make that happen, and congratulate you and your organization for helping make that occur, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Todd. I know there's some trial balloons about renaming this area Sensor Valley, but.
We're, yeah, there's many different ideas.
I suppose Happy Valley will still have the top.
It'll always still be Happy Valley.
All right. Questions from the press?
And the more specifics, how the grant money would be used? Is it simply to help these companies expand, marketing, that type of thing?
It'd be marketing. It would be staffing. We'd hope to bring on several new staff members through either Ben Franklin Technology Partners or, and also help cover costs for trying to get some of our businesses to attend some trade shows, market materials, develop a branding strategy for our area, and also access to capital.
These are companies, I assume they already have someplace footprint in the marketplace and looking to, and with some funding help, could, could expand.
Expand and grow, and ideally keep them here right in Center County.
Thank you.
Great question. Gary, Jacob, anything? No? All right. Well, again, the commissioners are very supportive of this concept, and we know that the CBICC has its own loan pools that have helped some of these businesses.
Yes.
CEDOCAG has put millions of dollars into Center County just so far this year in loan programs, and of course, the university has been tremendous, and Ben Franklin Technology Partners is just a pillar of strength for the entrepreneurial community in all the counties they cover, but especially in Center County. Great. Unless there's anything else, I think we could take a motion.
I'll move to approve the letter of support for CEDOCAG's Build to Scale Grant application for Project Succeed.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the letter of support for CEDOCAG's Build to Scale Grant application for Project Succeed. Love that acronym. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Great. Thanks, Todd. Like I said, stick around for a couple minutes. I have another potential economic development project. On top of the one I just sent you over the week.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. So we'll now move on to our check run with Commissioner Concepcion.
Yeah, so the check I'd like to highlight today is for housing transitions. They're one of our key county partners in addressing housing insecurity in Center County. And with that, I would like to make a motion that we approve the check run that is dated October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the check run dated October eighteenth. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the administrator's report. Do we have one, John?
Nothing to report at this time.
All right. We'll move on to reports and announcements, and I don't know if this is the last voter registration report we're going to have, because I think we still have a few applications still in the process.
Yeah, I think there's possible that this isn't all of it, but. So today on our total voters on our report is one hundred and eight thousand one hundred and sixty-seven voters registered in Center County. That is up nine hundred and thirty-six from this time last week. Of those voters, forty-four thousand seven hundred and two are Democratic voters. Green Party voters are one hundred and seventy-one. Libertarian voters, six hundred and twenty-eight. No affiliation voters, sixteen thousand one hundred and nine, and Republican voters comprise forty-three thousand five hundred and ninety-four. All of the other minor parties come up to two thousand nine hundred and sixty-three, bringing us to the total voters on report being one hundred and eight thousand one hundred and sixty-seven. Our voter, our party of the week today is the People's Working Party of the United States with one registered voter. Moving on to the precinct of the week, we are looking at Rush Township West. This is precinct seventy-five. They have four hundred and fifty-seven total registered voters in precinct sixty-five, seventy-five, I'm sorry. They had a total voter turnout of twenty-eight percent at the last election in April, and they vote at the First Church of Christ at one, one four three seven Tyrone Pike in Phillipsburg. And we'd like to thank the church for the use of their facility for Rush Township West, and that's the voter report.
Great. Thanks, Commissioner Concepcion. For the announcements, we are now past the voter registration deadline. That was midnight last night. But you still have until October twenty-ninth, which is the last day to apply for a mail-in or civilian absentee ballot for the November fifth election, and we would remind people with mail-in or civilian absentee ballots to please turn them in sooner rather than later. They do take a little time to process, but we do thankfully have eight drop boxes spread throughout the county, four in the State College area, and four in the Belfont and more rural parts of the county. The Board of Commissioners will be meeting, or our Board of Commissioners meeting on Tuesday, November fifth, has been canceled due to the general election, and Center County government offices will be closed on Monday, November eleventh, in observance of Veterans Day. And of course, the election itself, again, November fifth, you can certainly vote in person, seven a.m. to eight p.m., and if you're in line by seven fifty-nine, fifty-nine p.m., you will still be able to vote. John, do we have any executive sessions to report and hold?
No executive sessions to report or hold.
All right. And, all right, I'll try to go through this as quickly as I can. Our public meeting schedule, we have budget work sessions today at one o'clock, two o'clock, three o'clock, and three-thirty p.m. On Thursday, October twenty-fourth, we have a work session at nine-thirty. Our Employee Benefits Trust meeting at ten, and a Board of Elections meeting at one. All of those are here in room one forty-six. Next week, Tuesday, we have a Board of Commissioners meeting at ten and a work session at one. And then on Thursday, October thirty-first, Finance Committee at nine, and combined Board of Commissioners and Seller Board meeting at ten, again, all in room one forty-six at the Willaback Building. Take questions from the press at this point. No questions? Jacob?
I have a couple unrelated questions. The first one was, it's about two weeks from Election Day, and I just wanted to check in and ask and see if everything was still running smoothly as far as having the staff to do everything, no hiccups anywhere, just making sure that all's good and going on, and just wanted to ask you for a staff support on that.
Sure. Well, I'll pass it on to Commissioner Concepcion in a minute, but I'm under the impression that thankfully we had hundreds and hundreds of people volunteer to work the polls, help process the mail-in ballots, help staff the satellite elections office, and assist here at the Willaback Building. But Commissioner Concepcion is chair of that committee.
Yeah, so we've had great response from the community in seeking both temporary staff to staff elections and in terms of poll workers. So I think we're going to be in good shape. If anyone's still interested in working at the polls, they should certainly go ahead and visit vote PA dot gov, vote dot PA dot gov.
And then the other question that I had was actually in regards to something that y'all had talked about, I believe it was last Commissioners' meeting. It was in the voters' report. It was the precinct of the day, and it was an election house.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes.
In Rush Township. And I think that that is a very unique thing, and it was mentioned that there was one in Spring, and that there was only a handful left in Commonwealth. And I was kind of wondering if, are y'all would be able to put me in the direction of who I would be able to talk to to get some more information on those things.
Well, I think Mr. Dershowitz would be our most experienced person on that.
Well, those, they, they've been traditionally voting places here in Center County, and we've used, used them for as long as I can remember. The challenge, of course, over the course of time has been, you know, when they started, there was no heat, there was no, no real, you know, bathroom facilities, no handicap accessibility. And over the years, that's been one of the priorities is to, for that one day a year that they're, or two days a year, rather, that they're used to provide those amenities.
Make sure that they're upgraded.
Yeah, so that's, that's been, that's been one of the challenges. But I, I understand there are only a handful of these facilities in the state, but we are luckily one, one of the counties that does have two of them. And primarily, if you want to think about it this way, I think at the time, there were no real good places to, to use for voting and elections, so these, these facilities provide that for the, for the local folks that, in those precincts. So it's, it's, it's kind of exciting and kind of gratifying to see that they're still being used, and I don't think there's any movement to, to change that. So I would suspect there'll be, there'll be in our inventory of, of election facilities for a long, long time. But one of the nice thing is, when we do have an issue there, we just fix it.
Yeah.
And we don't have, you know, we, we're not paying anybody rent, we're not asking for, for permission. Those are just places that we control. And the one out in Colville and, you know, Spring Township has been part of the voting community for generations, so I'd like to keep it that way.
I believe, wasn't there a tradition that they painted them blue as well?
I don't know. They're white, at least.
Ours are probably painted white by this point, but I think there had been a historical tradition that it was painted blue so it looked a little different than some of the other buildings.
I had gotten home after the last meeting, and I went to look up some information about it, and all I could find was stuff for, I looked up election houses and voting houses, and all I could find was stuff for, like, the House of Representatives and stuff like that. That one showed up, so I figured I'd bring it back and ask today, and I appreciate it. So thank you very much.
The one in Colville, here in Spring Township, is almost around the corner if you want to get a picture.
Yeah.
Okay. Double check with the elections office. They give you the exact address.
The person who probably could give you the most background on that would be Joyce McKinley, who was for years and years our, our elections director. I can get your, her info, her phone number, and we can, you know, you can contact her, because I'm sure she had, I'm sure she has the much more broad spectrum of information available, so.
That's fantastic. I would greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Unless there's anything else of the good of the order, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn at ten fifty. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries.